Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 10, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. It's my wife's 43rd birthday today, so I'm gonna say happy birthday to her. She's watching at home, honey. Happy birthday. We're gonna go ahead and get started tonight by reading our roll, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Staley.
Here.
Recky.
Here.
All right. We're honored tonight to have Pastor Mike Bang from right here in our neighborhood at Faith Family Church. He also brought Connor with him, his grandson. So Connor, thanks for being here, man. So we'll ask the audience to rise for the invocation this evening and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you bow your heads, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you tonight, God, for your love. We thank you that everyone around this table, Father, you've put them in these positions of authority and leadership, God, to bless our community. Lord, we ask you to give them wisdom, and God, thank you. Lord, we pray for our president tonight, God, that you will give him the strength for leading our nation, God. We ask you to give his medical staff the wisdom to deal with the coronavirus, God. And Lord, thank you for that. We receive that by faith. And Lord, bless each and every one, their precious families, their marriages, their homes, their health. We thank you in all for these things, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll move on to item four this evening, which is our consent agenda. Look for any changes or motions there.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
I have two items that I'd like to pull just for further discussion. Item number one and number three, that's on the list of contracts that you submitted to us.
All right. Item number one and three to be pulled. Any other changes, counsel?
I would move to approve the consent agenda with those two removals.
Second. All right. Motion approved by Starr and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? All right. We'll vote on those, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our next item, item 18, which is our regular agenda. And look for a motion on that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Kylie, seconded by Selberg.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to amend the regular agenda by moving item 25 to immediately following item 20.
Second.
All right. Motion by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Kylie on that. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right. We'll vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. So we're back to our amended main motion. Any other amendments? All right. Seen none. Any other discussion? Then we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We're on to our public input for tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total, lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, I'd like to invite anyone forward for general public input. And please note, clerk, our time right now is 7:04. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Phyllis Erins. I live in southeast Sioux Falls. Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Now is the time to put the brakes on the on-demand public transportation system idea in Sioux Falls. Public transportation is an economic engine and quality-of-life issue for our city. For these reasons, I find it interesting that other major city projects, including the new city center building, used professionals in the design and construction of them. The city hires professionals for street projects, bridges, water, sewer, and so forth. Public transportation deserves that same level of expertise. While I agree there is a wealth of information on the internet, it cannot take the place of people who are experts in their field. I am impressed by the credentials of Mr. Grisby, the new Director of Innovation and Technology, but these credentials do not include being an expert professional transportation system designer. Being good stewards of taxpayer dollars means hiring proven professionals for revamping the current fixed route system and avoids Sioux Falls being another successful failure. There are many, many studies that show replacing fixed routes with on-demand does not work. It is also interesting that the city finds it necessary to market an on-demand system to encourage ridership, but has not implemented a comprehensive marketing campaign to encourage ridership on the current and more cost-effective fixed route system. Innovation can happen in any type of public transportation system. Here are some useful and usable ideas for enhancing the current fixed route system. Number one, increase the frequency on certain routes to help people get to and from work. Tweak some routes, possibly adding new routes to currently unserved parts of the city, could also encourage ridership. As with increasing frequency, expanding the days and hours of service could be an incentive for people to use the bus. With so many businesses running 24/7, people working the second shift currently may be able to get to work but not able to get home again. This may be a great time to work toward having zero fares on all buses. When you consider the costs involved with collecting fares, it may make sense to just eliminate them. This could increase ridership. In summary, let's not put the cart before the horse. Bring on an expert in public transportation system design and consider implementing a robust marketing campaign for the current system. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Phyllis. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Pastor. You know, one of my big issues in Sioux Falls is discrimination, big time, because I got granted my civil matter through the courts by default, but the sheriff's office now is making excuses for Mark Samuel Graham and saying things like, well, he ain't got no accesses, he ain't got no property, he got this, he ain't got that. But yet, he brags on to other people about how he's waiting for his dad to die so he can take over all his property. I had tried every place you could think of. I've tried the disability's right. I've tried the acne people. I've tried LSD. I've tried David King Law Firm. I'm frustrated because the last guy that sued Mark Graham got way more than what I'm supposed to get granted, and David King took his case, and that guy got over 60 grand. Now I have to go back to the court system again. It seems like, no matter what I try to do, it's always doors being shut in my face. It's like, my whole life has been like, you know, people taking, me paying, me paying, me paying, me paying the courts, me paying the sheriff's office. Now they're making excuses. Now, I do know I got a meeting next Tuesday to meet with two ladies, wonderful ladies, at your office, Mr. Mayor. I keep hearing about the city bus. My honest opinion, my mother's deceased right now, but there was an incident a couple years ago where a bus driver actually assaulted my mom on a bus, and my mother got squished in the middle of the bus because I told the guy ahead of time, she's not in her seatbelt good enough, my mom was in a wheelchair, and he had the last nerves to curse at my mom afterwards. I've had bus drivers get rude with me when I had like a brace on my arm. I had a bus driver kick me off for no reason. You know, I heard a bus driver yelling at James one time. And after the incident where some guy decided to use my head as a punching bag, I haven't been down to the city buses ever since. My issue is, why is it that everybody else that tries to get help or try to get their civil money or try to get their back pay from security? I've even had incidents where past payees got allowed to do fraudery on me. And I went through security, they sent me a note, but they told me straight up I would not get no back pay. I handle my own money now. God bless, everybody.
Thanks, Heather.
Wonderful night.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate you giving me the time to listen to what I have to say. I'm here also to speak about the on-demand.
State your name.
Oh, I forgot about that. Sorry. First time. Penny Hall, and I live central Sioux Falls, close to downtown here. I live with a medical illness. Having this change in the bus system called on-demand will force me to have to use paratransit, which is expensive. I can afford a $15 a month pass because I lived on a fixed income. On-demand will be too confusing to me. It's a lot of extra time and, I don't want to say effort, but, you know, I don't, since how I live on a fixed income, I don't have the money for the extra data or for the internet to try to figure out where the buses are gonna be at. So I like this fixed transportation the way it is because I can depend on it. I know where it's gonna be. I know what time it's gonna be there, and I know what time it's coming back, and I can trust that that's going to be taken care of. I can also speak to some friends that I have that are also on a fixed income, and I believe I can speak for them, too, that it will be more confusing. And trying to get from one place to the other is not gonna be dependable and fixable. So I'm hoping you will reconsider the on-demand transportation and keep for the fixed income. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Rath. I'm going to share a personal story about why changeable bus stops are problematic. It is my sister's story. She has been a regular user of public transit in Sioux Falls since 2011. During those years, she has not owned a vehicle. She is completely reliant on Sioux area metro. She is disabled. She has profound hearing loss. Her means of verbal communication are lip reading, American Sign Language, and the use of ASL interpreters. Her reality is that when verbal communication is involved, she misses out on the majority of what is said. If she must understand what has been said, she carries a notebook and a pencil with her at all times. She thinks of the fixed route system in a positive way. Being able to navigate a fixed route gives her a sense of independence. She travels throughout the city. This is how she navigates the system. It is predictable. It is reliable. She speaks fondly of how the bus drivers are such an important part of her support system. She is low-income. She lives in subsidized housing, and she has a government-issued phone with limited data and capabilities. She does not need to communicate with anything or anyone in order to understand how to get to her destination. From her home, she has three options on where she can catch the bus. She does not need to wonder if she is standing on the right corner, nor does she need to question how long she will have to wait, especially in the winter. It is predictable. It is reliable, the fixed route. She rides the bus Monday through Friday, but rarely on Saturday. This means her data, her struggles with an online public transit system would not be part of the small sample that will be the pilot project. There are many people in Sioux Falls who live on the margins, who use public transit, those with cognitive impairments, those who have limited or no English, the disabled, et cetera. My sister's story is just one example.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Can I?
Three minutes is up. Thank you for your story. Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I watched the informational earlier today, and I was astounded by what I heard. A one-year warranty on a $200 million project funded by taxpayers, and this isn't a play palace like the Event Center. This is a water reclamation plant. This is something that must work on day one and must work for a long time. One year warranty with the option to sue them for six years if something goes wrong, which doesn't mean they're gonna come and fix it. Gets even better. We don't even get to pick the contractor. The taxpayers represented by the city council don't even get to pick the contractor. We should have at least a six-to-10-year warranty on this project. As I have mentioned to people before, in Germany, when the contractors build the roads, they must warranty them. If they fail, they must fix them at their expense. Guess what? Their roads last a really long time. What a concept, huh? Haven't we learned anything from the Event Center siding, the administration's geothermal system, the leaky roof on the pavilion that should have been fixed the day they opened the building, and the roof that should have been, the Cinedome failed, the midco with its multiple problems with windows and some other stuff, and this beautiful parking ramp we have over here? We've learned nothing from the construction manager risk thing. We should be hiring the contractor, and they should be warranting the work. It is really that simple. But no, it's not your money. It's the taxpayers' money. So if something goes wrong, oh, well. Then one of the counselors had the nerve to say that it was ludicrous to say that we don't have warranties. Well, I would really love to see them, because so far, these projects that I've mentioned, we haven't had a warranty on any of it. Where are they? Did they get shredded? Are they hiding in some drawer somewhere? I'd really like to see them. It isn't ludicrous. It's ludicrous that we wouldn't ask for one. That's what's ludicrous. It's ludicrous that we wouldn't hire a contractor that's gonna back up their work for at least five to 10 years. It's ludicrous that we keep allowing this to happen every year in this city, spending millions of dollars of taxpayers' money and not getting a warranty. It is ridiculous. And it's not just this body. It's many bodies before this that continue to let this happen, and we all sit around and we kind of go, huh? What happened? It's obvious. It's in front of your face.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name is, good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. My name is Dwayne Poppins. I am a disabled elderly person, and I recently just filed for tax relief on my property. And I found out something that maybe many of you don't know. That once your assessment goes over $199,500 on your house, you are no longer eligible. Guess what? When I moved in five years ago, my house was $188,000. Then I went to $193,000. Then it went to $209,000. Then it went to $218,000 last year, which I found out a little bit too late to file. But I was gonna file this year, and I talked to the right people about it, and then I found this out. So I had my house appraised this afternoon as well, and I'm still ineligible. Now tell me, council members, you have a surplus in this city of $6.5 million, I believe, and I understand you've all spent it already. Have you ever heard of a rainy day fund? Have we not learned our lessons from that thing over there? Which, is it gonna be finished? Is it gonna be built? And who was the one that did the original contract that didn't make the contract or finish the project for the amount that was set apart to do it? Now we need more money to finish it. Plus, you're gonna take a million and a half to go fund a ski project. I think there's better ways of spending money in this city than what you're doing. I want you to take a real good, hard look at yourselves and think. Can't you at least put a freeze on these taxes? And next year, if it gets appraised higher yet, even if you qualify this year, that would throw you out again. So this is something that you say is a Minnetonka County problem. No, it's a city problem, too, because you're requesting more taxes from the citizens every year, and that is what is making it so hard for the elderly to stay in their homes. You are forcing us out. I want you to take a serious look at your own conscience. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Tim Stanga. I've been talking about this issue for quite some time, running our elderly people, the ones that have brought Sioux Falls to where it is today, running our elderly people out of their houses. It seems like that's all I hear from the elderly people that I work out with at the gym or that I meet out in the public. It's all they talk about is how much their taxes have went up this year. Some of them went up $300 this year. These people can't afford to stay in their houses. They can't afford their bills, and they're on a fixed income. But it seems like you guys can spend money like water because it's not yours. But if it was your money, you'd make sure that it was spent very wisely. You know, one thing I've realized, coming up here, you guys can pass everything you want for the people that give you money for your campaigns. But the problem is, it's the people that elect you, and that's something you guys gotta realize. It's the people that elect you, not the people that give you money to run. You can have all the money in the world to run on, but if you can't be open and honest to the people of Sioux Falls and start looking at the people that get you, bring you into the office, and start realizing that you have to take care of the people that brought you here, even the 211. I had people call 211. They can't get anybody to come out and help them shovel. They can't get anybody to come out and help them do their yards. We got rid of that program, too. Why did we do that? Is it to push all the elderly people into apartments? Because I'll tell you what, that's the last place I'm going when I get old, because I ain't gonna live in no apartment. So start thinking about the elderly people, what we can do in this city. We can go to the penitentiary. We can get help from the people in the penitentiary. You're darn right, these people just enjoy to help the elderly people. So I'm just asking, and this guy, he comes up and asks you, what can he do? Well, no, it's what can you guys do? And our roads are terrible. We ought to have a slogan, "Potholes, we're on it."
Sir. Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zolkitis, and I'm here to talk about the Ethics Board. I was at Friday's Ethics Board meeting, and I heard a couple of things repeatedly. One was that if it's legal, it's ethical. And the other I heard was that they really don't like to provide opinions on hypothetical scenarios. That's what I heard. Now, in my opinion, an Ethics Board should provide opinions on four different topics. Whether it's legal, that's kind of the basis. Whether it's ethical, it's an important consideration. How did things go in the past? Were they ethical? And what we do in the future, is my plan ethical? That's the four things that an Ethics Board should look at. Now, I went and looked at city law on this, it's ordinance 35, and it says you can have, you can ask for an advisory opinion. You can talk about the law. And then, but if you have an anonymous complaint, the Ethics Board doesn't want to look at it. Okay, so I looked at the law. And then I thought, maybe there's some problems here. Well, ignoring anonymous complaints discourages complaints in the first place. We want more complaints, not less. The ordinance, I didn't see any mention in the ordinance at all about morality and ethics, and it's supposed to be an Ethics Board. Why doesn't it talk about ethics? Made no sense to me. And then, the board doesn't like to review hypothetical plans. I would think if somebody had a question about what they were planning, that they should talk to the Ethics Board and get an opinion. But Ethics Board doesn't like to provide opinions on that. It doesn't seem to be a whole lot of good. In general, I don't like the way the Ethics Board is configured or what its mandate is. It looks too much like political theater and not enough like an Ethics Advisory Board. So my recommendation is that you fix the Ethics Board. And here's a view at Great Bear, one of the last days it was open for the season, and if we can smile about beauty, then we don't worry quite so much about how government doesn't quite work the way we want it to. And with that, I bid everybody a good evening.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else this evening for public input? All right, clerk, we'll move on to our pulled items from the consent agenda.
Item one is for the police department, agreement to provide services for primary and secondary victims of sexual and domestic violence. The Compass Center for $51,500. And item three is city attorney for, provide services and programming for underserved clients of all cultures in Sioux Falls and provide driver's education specifically for newcomers. Multicultural Center of Sioux Falls, $187,678.
Do you want to tackle these together, Counselor Starr, or separately?
Yeah, that'd be great, because if we could do those together. I pulled them basically, Mr. Mayor, because I wanted to bring awareness to both services. I did have a question for someone from the PD. I know the chief said, good evening. My specific question is that we saw a media report yesterday of a family that wasn't taking care of their children. And I'm assuming they ended up there, and I don't want to discuss that specific case. But my point being that, as parents, we have a responsibility to take care of our children. And when we don't, the way the, at least if they have a run-in with law enforcement or the PD, that the Compass Center handles some of that as well as the sexual and domestic violence. And so, give me just a minute or so of the role that they play for the PD to make it easier to do your job.
Sure. Mayor, counsel.
Sorry, I didn't introduce.
Mike Colwell, captain with the Sioux Falls Police Department. Currently, I'm in charge of our investigative services division, so we have a lot of interaction with the Compass Center. They provide a lot of services for the police department, which is why we partner with them. They come out when we take initial reports of sexual assault to the hospital, and they'll send an advocate to the hospital while we have a patrol officer that's there taking that initial report to help comfort the victim and help them walk through the process. They also are there to support the victim throughout the entire criminal process, and then they provide counseling services for them as well at no cost to the survivor.
Perfect. Thank you. I keep wanting to say lieutenant, and I apologize. Congratulations on your advancement, captain. So that's exactly what I needed to cover or wanted to cover with that item.
Thanks, Mike. Do you want to talk about the next one as well? You want to vote on this one individually?
Let's do it together, and maybe it'll speed up the process. Just, the other reason that I pulled this as well is that we've spent a lot of time in the community talking about refugees and immigrants to our community. And I've had several residents that approached me, well, we don't do anything to help. We pass, the council only passes resolutions and... you do, and, uh, that part of it. So I wanted to, to at least reassure the community, we are doing, we're not doing everything we can, but we're making a, a really big impact with what the Multicultural Center does, so.
Hi, Chrissy.
I'm Chrissy Nicolai, I'm with the Multicultural Center.
Mics down, pull the mics down, just a skosh, there, there you go, thanks.
Sorry. Uh, we provide 21 programs and services to the, uh, different ethnic and religious communities in town. So, for example, our after-school program, uh, serves around 700 kids, uh, each year. We work on academics, we work on race relations and safety, and, uh, we're working on some additional, um, new, um, items that the school district is working on, like emotional intelligence and self-regulation. If you've had trauma, well, as a child, um, trying to help that, because when you become adult, that affects your adulthood. Uh, we have a job skills program specifically, uh, focused on immigrants and refugees, and for the last four and a half years, we've helped over 700 people obtain work and retain, we follow them for 90 days. Um, we facilitate meetings between first responders and the different ethnic and religious communities, um, that's gone really, really well. This last, uh, Sunday, we had a interfaith dialogue, which was amazing. Uh, we had, um, Muslim, Jewish, and Christian represented in this particular dialogue, and it was, it was great. The community got involved, and so we try to uplift everyone, um, and just show how every ethnic and religious community is an asset and a wonderful thing for Sioux Falls. So, we would like to do more, but, you know, that takes more money. But I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you. I guess the other point that I wanna point out is, I wanna thank my fellow counselors, because over the last four years, we've done a good job of taking all of these groups and putting contracts together with them with expectations and metrics of getting our, showing, being able to show the residents of our community a return on our investment. And those contracts are what we're approving tonight, um, on these two groups, and there are other groups, uh, that we've done as well, and I, I really appreciate the work we've done. We've each, I think, taken different ones and dug deeper in them, and putting it on paper, and knowing what we're getting for the investment that we're making, I think we've made some really big strides as a council. And it's one of the things that I'm really proud about, uh, of serving on this group.
You wanna make a motion on that one?
I would. I'd move to approve items number one and three under the contracts.
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion by Counselor Starr, and seconded by Selberg to approve those two items. Uh, any discussion, counsel, on those? All right, we'll vote on those, please.
Council members Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, onto item 20.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Providing Supplemental Appropriations for the Entertainment Tax Fund, Washington Pavilion, $355,000.
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Scott Rust, Finance Office. Um, are there any questions first to start regarding this? Uh, again, this is the, the supplemental appropriation, um, to start the design work for the Washington Pavilion. Um, this will be for the Parapet and Cornice Project. Really, the, this will be, this $355,000 will fund design and contract administration.
All right, thanks, Scott. Uh, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, Scott Ayresman, Sioux Falls. You know, one thing that often surprises me is that the council, over the last few weeks, um, has been talking about their right to their First Amendment, their right to ethically do what they want to, their right to do whatever they want to do. But they never really fight for our right, for open First Amendment rights or public input. They time us when we come up here and talk, and it has to do with what the pavilion, trust me. So, it often surprises me that they're so, work so hard to fight for their rights, but don't wanna fight for our rights. The pavilion has taken millions and millions and millions of dollars to build, and millions more in repairs and maintenance over the years. And no one on the council since the pavilion has been there, has ever put their foot down and said, "Enough's enough. Why wasn't this built correctly? Why was it too expensive? Why are we constantly fixing it? And why aren't you raising your own money for some of these capital improvements like the zoo has done?" So, to the pavilion. This has, project has to be done, or that ceiling, that roof is gonna collapse in, the, the terracotta's gonna fall off the building and hit someone and kill 'em. That's been known for 15 years, and I don't know why it's still up there, and, or hurt someone seriously. So, I think it has to be done. But what I, what I implore the council to do is to look out for the taxpayers for once. Take a look at the names that sit on the board of the Washington Pavilion. There's a lot of money there. Why don't they get out in the community and ask some of their lot-of-money friends to contribute to this? Maybe a million, maybe two million, maybe pay for the whole thing. For all the millions and millions and millions of dollars that the citizens of this Sioux Fall, of Sioux Falls has poured into that building, millions, I think it's, I think it's probably well over $100 million we poured into that building, that just someone can have the generous heart to actually pay for at least one capital improvement project on that building, and donate some money out of the goodness of their heart. So, I would put a stipulation on this project as a council, and I would say the pavilion has to raise a certain percentage of that cost, on their own, and gift it to, back to the taxpayers of Sioux Falls, just like the zoo has done on several projects, which is owned by the taxpayers of Sioux Falls. So don't tell me the pavilion can't do it because we own the building, that's just simply untrue. So, for once, why don't you look out for our interests? That would be delightful. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm David Zalkitis, and I have just a few comments about the architect for the Washington Pavilion work. So, the, the place has fallen down and needs some work. All right, that happens. The question that came up last week is whether or not the $355,000 is a reasonable fee. Well, I happen to have a brother who's big into contracting in Pittsburgh, and I wrote him about this, and he said that, yeah, six or seven percent is about standard for an architect's fee, including construction supervision. So then I got ahold of Scott Rust over here, and, and he said, "Yeah, the $355 includes everything, and so, that means that the fee is reasonable." So it's good to know that sometimes the city does things well, and not everything is a disaster. Here's a chance to, to say that things did well, and we should just know that.
Any other public input on this topic? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for Scott on this item? Counselor Brecky.
Scott, and, and Sean as well, I just wanna make you aware of something that kinda came up in the last three days here, you know, as you move into this contract. I had a citizen contact me via email and made a suggestion, which I forwarded on to Jeff Eckhoff, and we actually spoke with Jim Clark about it today, and the suggestion was, um, the, the balusters, the individual said, "Maybe when you take those off, if they can be taken off intact, they could be sold as a fundraiser." He said, "I'd like to have one of those in my garden." And I said, "You know, that's a good idea." So I forwarded it off to Jeff Eckhoff, and he said, "That's a good idea, but we don't really do that as a city." And I understood that. He said, "But perhaps we could give it to a nonprofit that might be interested, if there was interest in some prop, nonprofit affiliated with the arts." So when Jim Clark was here today at the sculpture walk, I said, "Jim, would your group possibly be interested in something like this?" So this is at its infancy, and I just wanna share it, because as we pass the contract, I'm assuming you're gonna be, you know, designing for demolition, and this would be an appropriate time to build that into the demolition contract, that possibility, if it was possible to get those off of there, you know, how heavy they are, how big they are, and all of that. So, I just raised it, it's just a flicker, it's an idea. Um, you know, I think, you know, Councilmember Kylie talked about, um, the connection of this building to the community, and, you know, I think there might be an interest in people purchasing those, and it's kind of an innovative idea, so I just throw that out and open in public, and it's just spun a little bit, uh, just as a suggestion, it's something that we might do, and, and I, I bring it up publicly to get some feedback on it, to things, to see if, you know, my, maybe hearing me speak about it, you know, people show some interest. And again, when you're into it, you'll find out whether it's possible, you know, financially feasible to do something like that.
Right. Thanks for passing that on. When we have the scoping meeting with Architecture Inc., we'll, uh, we'll see if we can incorporate that into the, the demo process, and see if we can take those off, you know, and, and make sure we can try and save a few of them for potentially to auction them off, and possibly as a fundraiser. Good idea.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other questions for Scott? Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. No questions, um, just a statement, and I said it during the informational as well, that anything we can do to protect the integrity of the building, but also be mindful of that cost. I mean, six million bucks for something that's not structurally necessary is a lot of money. However, we also recognize that, that demolition is a huge component of that, and to have that broken out as you move forward, what's demolition, what's putting something back up, so we can make those decisions. Obviously, we, we won't be able to get that far unless we approve this tonight to know what we have to do.
Right, right. We'll be bringing lots of.
Yes.
Options to the table for you guys.
I appreciate that. I think it's important to have those options on the table. Um, there's been some other suggestions. Uh, Counselor Kylie talked about having, you know, let's skip every other one, can we do that? What can we do for options with that, to ensure that, uh, we can shave a little bit of money off of that, uh, from that substantial?
I, I have had conversations already with the architect, and, and they're all on board, trying to find different options for us to obviously shave cost.
Thank you.
Other questions for Scott? Someone wanna put a motion on the floor on this? Counselor Staley?
Fiberglass replacing terracotta. So, just to say this again for the record, uh, Scott, and I brought this up in the past when we've talked about this, but it's important to me, and I think it's important to our, our constituents as well, that we get a solid warranty on this. We need a warranty on the workmanship, and we need a warranty on the product itself. And it was Ohio where, where you traveled to, correct?
Yeah, Cleveland, Ohio is where this product is, uh, used. It's also used quite frequently on the west, or, excuse me, on the east coast, too.
Right. And, and so, when you first showed us the impressive photos of buildings that have had this replacement of the, of the fiberglass, what I said at the time, and what I'd still like to know, and I could research this myself down the road as well, but I'd like to know the longevity of these buildings. Um, you know, how lo, what, what's, what's gonna be the, the life of this product?
Right.
Um, and, um, so, and I, I think somebody had asked in this discussion within this body about having a pricing for how much the terracotta would be, to re, so that it, when that, so the public understands, this is just the, the first phase of this, we're not actually approving anything in stone, so to speak.
Right, really what you're approving tonight is really the design, um, the, the money for, design for this project.
Other questions for Scott? Move to approve?
Second, Erickson.
Counselor Kylie moves to approve, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Any discussion amongst the council? Counselor Staley?
So, the other discussion amongst the council would be that down the road, um, this, and I had a co- conversation, um, with Darren Smith, he called me, because I brought up the, the same thing that Mr. Ayresman was talking about, that why can't we, at some point, why couldn't we go back to the pavilion, um, and ask them to contribute some, something to this project? And I know historically, they've said that the city pays for all the building costs, but there's still room in the future for that discussion, isn't there?
There's always room for discussion. Yeah. At this point in time, we're, um, really just in the design phase.
Okay. It's just so the public understands that there's a, that's a possibility. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the council on this? All right, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 25.
A resolution amending the 2020-2024 capital program to add funding for CIP 13003, Washington Pavilion Building Improvements, $355,000.
Great. This, uh, really just amends the capital plan, uh, for the Washington Pavilion, so, again, so we can get started with the design.
All right, thanks, Scott. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, any questions on it?
Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
Move to approve by Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion? All right, we'll vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 21 then.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, repealing subchapter Sioux Falls Veterans Park Advisory Board of Chapter 95, Parks and Recreation of the Code of Warranties of Said City.
Hi, Mike.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, Mike Patton, Parks and Recreation. We were here last week, excuse me, for the first reading for this ordinance. Uh, we also got some really nice remarks from past Board President Rick Tupper, which I will not go over in detail tonight, but I do have a quick summary, just, uh, for your information. If you remember, the ordinance was originally created in 2001 with the, um, Board's responsibility to advise the Parks and Recreation Board, Director of Parks and Recreation, Mayor and City Council regarding the, the design, construction, and operation of Veterans Memorial Park. Since that time, the park has been fully built out. All maintenance and operations are currently performed by city staff. Uh, the Board has established, uh, rules and regulations for the park, which have been incorporated into, uh, the city's, uh, policies and guidelines. All the events that take place in the park currently go through, uh, the city's special events process. And over the past few years, um, the Board's really struggled to find meaningful agenda items, and for that purpose, they ultimately made the decision to dissolve the Board. Uh, using their terms, the mission has been accomplished. Uh, since that time, the Parks and Recreation Board has also unanimously recommended, uh, dissolving of the Board. So with that, I can try and answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, Mike. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Please come forward.
Veterans Park, that's a really nice park. I've been there several times, and, um, it's a great asset to our city. And I, you know, I have dozens of family members on both sides of my family that are veterans, all the way going back to World War II. But, I'm hoping in the future that the next time the city has an opportunity like this to build a park, um, that we put a committee, a board together like they did, uh, to build a park that honors peace, and people who promote peace, and harmony, and humanity, and, you know, the environment. Um, there's thousands of veterans parks all over the country. And they're great. But wanting to be nice if the community started building peace parks, and there are some peace parks across the country. And, so I think the next time we have an opportunity to do something like this, we should build a beautiful park like this that's devoted to peace instead of war. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, counselors, do you have any questions for, uh, Mike on this item, or?
Move to approve, Erickson.
All right, motion approved by Erickson. Have a second on this?
Second, Selberg.
Seconded by Counselor Selberg. Any discussion amongst council? All right, let's vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to 22, please.
Second reading and ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing interim water rates for certain customers outside the City of Sioux Falls Prairie Meadow area.
Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Chad Hebe, with the Engineering Division of Public Works.
This sets some interim water rates for those residents, and the rates are in-town water rates for a period up to 18 months. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chad. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councillors, do you have any questions for Chad on this one?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion approved by Councillor Erickson, seconded by Councillor Kylie. Councillor Staley, did you have a?
Yes, Chad, I just want to say that this is such wonderful news. The whole process has been fabulous for those people at Prairie Meadows, and so we're hoping for the best.
Thank you. It took a lot to bring this together, so, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Any other discussion amongst the council on this? Then we'll vote on it.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 23.
Deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, February 11, 2020, a resolution declaring the necessity to construct sidewalk on West 85th Street and assessing the cost of each lot or tract of land benefiting thereby.
During a project this year out on West 85th Street between Tallgrass and Louise, we will be installing sidewalks along with some other infrastructure improvements. The property's in yellow. We are bringing this forward that we will be able to assess them for the improvements for sidewalk, once we get to that point. This is the resolution declaring the necessity to construct the sidewalks on those parcels and giving the City Council the authority to assess the cost after construction through a separate resolution. Two of the parcels are in the city limits, Parcels 3 and 4 are not, and those assessments will be levied once they are annexed. The owners of Parcels 3 and 4 were here before with questions, and I met with them on February 14th, and I believe I answered all their questions and concerns, and we are ready to proceed.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that, Chad. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councillors, do you have any questions for Chad on this item?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Councillor Kylie. Any discussion, council? Councillor Starr?
Very quickly, I'm so glad we deferred this. I know, and I wasn't going to vote for the deferment because it was pretty simple and it was straightforward, but no one here to testify against it tonight or having questions shows this, that you did your job, Chad, and we appreciate that, that they were, that they've gotten all their answers, their questions answered. It hasn't slowed us down that much. We took the time to do it right and move forward. Thank you for you and your department. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. The day we went out there was Valentine's Day, and it was very cold and windy, so.
All right. We'll take a vote on this item, then.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. On to item 24, please.
A resolution declaring the necessity to grade gravel, construct curb and gutter, construct sidewalk, sanitary sewer main, water main, storm sewer, asphalt surfacing, and streetlights on West Team Street, and assessing the cost of each lot or tract of land benefiting thereby.
So, this is very similar to the resolution of necessity for sidewalk, but now we're talking about constructing an entire road. This segment of Team Street is just west of the main entrance of the new Thomas Jefferson High School. Since Team Street is a collector's street, the adjoining property owners are responsible to collect or to fund the construction of that. We have worked with the two property owners on either side of that road, and have come to an agreement, and they support the construction of that road with our construction of Marion Road. So, tonight is the resolution declaring the necessity to construct Team Street and gives the city the authority to assess the cost after construction through a separate resolution. I will mention that the property of the north is outside of the city limits, and we will assess them once they are brought into the city.
Thanks, Chad. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Council, do you have questions for Chad on this? Is there a motion to make?
Move to approve.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Kylie, seconded by Councillor Sale. Any discussion, council? We will vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 26, please.
A resolution of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the placement of sculptures on public property for an internationally recognized visual arts program known as Sculpture Walk Sioux Falls 2020.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Sioux Falls. Russ Lawrence with the City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. This evening, I have the honor and the privilege of having Jim Clark, the Executive Director for Sculpture Walk. Earlier today, we took a stroll through a PowerPoint's presentation for the 2020 Sculpture Walk program, and this is, we're celebrating our 17th year, the Sculpture Walk program. It started in 2004 with 34 sculptures, and today, in 2020, we're looking at 62. In the 16 years of our program, 863 sculptures have been displayed. Adding 62 more, we'll have 898 sculptures that will currently have been displayed since our infancy of Sculpture Walk. There have been 208 sculptures that have been sold or commissioned throughout this timeframe as well. And for the 2020 Sculpture Walk program, we had 142 entries, and they were received and jury'd by the Sculpture Walk Committee, and it is an international program. We're by 24 states and Canada are represented. We have 15 new artists in this year's Sculpture Walk program, 14 of which are from South Dakota, the most of any state. And we have seven artists from Sioux Falls, so it's becoming more of a local, so we celebrate that as well. The 2020 Sculpture Walk takedowns are scheduled for Saturday, April 18th, and the new installations are planned for Saturday, May 2nd. There are 62 sculptures and 11 alternates that were selected and recommended for 2020 placement in our downtown area or on public right-of-way and other publicly-owned property. The general downtown locations will remain the same. Sculpture Walk represents a broad collaboration of individuals and entities, both public and private, including downtown Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls Arts Council, the Chamber, and the City of Sioux Falls. There's over 100 businesses and individuals that contribute annually to the financial strength of Sculpture Walk. Over 50 volunteers help make Sculpture Walk a success on the takedown and installation days. The exhibition of public art is in our central business district area is recommended and encouraged by the City of Sioux Falls Downtown 2025 Plan and our Sioux Falls Arts Council's Sioux Falls Imagined Cultural Plan. Sculpture Walk is significant in that it helps create the first impression for downtown visitors by bringing a large number of sculptures to our business district for outdoor display. It simply enhances the beauty of our community, the culture of our downtown, celebrates the artists and their creativity, and it also allows an opportunity for visitors to enjoy. From May through September, the public will be able to vote for the People's Choice sculptures, and that sculpture is purchased by, then by the City of Sioux Falls up to $20,000. We've had more than 300,000 people visit Sculpture Walk downtown year after year. After being displayed in Sculpture Walk, artwork can then be purchased. That's why you see so many peepses in the last 16 years, just hanging around Sioux Falls, being plotted in businesses and residential areas as well. Several city departments, including Human Services, ADA Accessibility Review Board, Public Works Engineering, Risk Management, the Attorneys, Planning, along with the Sioux Falls Visual Arts Commission, have conducted their respective reviews and are supportive of the proposed sculptures and placements for the 2020 Sculpture Walk program. With that, Jim, is there anything that you would have to add? That concludes our report.
Thank you, Russ. Chad, thanks for getting that PowerPoint going there.
Yes, it is.
This is perfect for a presentation, so I'm glad we have one. It's good visuals, so. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item? Excuse me, councillors, do you have any questions for Russ or for Mr. Clark who's here? Councillor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Russ, for the presentation, Mr. Clark, this afternoon. I always do enjoy that one every year, and especially, it was interesting to learn for those who are here tonight or watching at home, I did not know, is you'd had price tags, or prices, or amounts, that they're worth for each one. I asked if they sold these, and apparently you can buy them, and you've sold quite a few. I don't remember how many, you told me recently, but quite a few, and that helps go back to support the cause as well, so I learn something new every year, but that was kind of fun to learn that as well. But anyways, great presentation. Thank you very much.
Other questions for Russ or for Jim? Councillor Kylie?
Just general comments. I really want to thank Jim Clark for his efforts the past 16 years, for his effort with this, the 17th year, and I suspect there's probably going to be more years in the future, so your efforts and dedication are greatly appreciated because the City of Sioux Falls greatly benefits from this, the artists do, because they gain the exposure, and our citizens are exposed to high-quality art as well, too. So, thank you very much. And Russ, thank you for your efforts with this matter as well.
Thank you.
Would council like to make a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve by Kylie, seconded by Councillor Selberg. Any other discussion, council, on this item? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate all your work on Sculpture Walk, man. All right, item 27.
A resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 11536, 2019, tract one into Westwood Valley 2nd Edition.
Good evening, Jeff.
Jeff Schmidt, representing planning staff this evening. This is a petition to annexation by the property owners for Westwood Valley. This is another addition for them as they're extending their property to the west. As we mentioned, it's an eight-acre property. It's continuing to expand their residential properties, and there's two tracks, and you can see it in this exhibit, that they'll just continue these housing neighborhood to the west with residential streets as they continue, and it's just this two tracks. It's directly north of 41st Street and west of Alice Road, so.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Damian Gribble with Earhart Griffin &amp; Associates. I don't have anything else to add. I represent the developer, so unless you have any other questions.
All right. I'm not seeing any. Thanks for being here. Appreciate that. Anyone else here to speak on this? Councillors, do you have any questions?
Move of approval, Nitzer.
Second, Erickson.
All right. Motion approved by Nitzer, seconded by Councillor Erickson. Any discussion, council? Take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 28 is a resolution approving the vacation of 100-foot section of South Overland Pass in Split Rock Township in Haha County, South Dakota.
Good evening, Chad. Hevy. This right-of-way is outside the city limits. It is in the Split Rock Township, west, east of Veterans Parkway and north of East 26th Street. The township vacated this right-of-way in October of 2019, and since this right-of-way is in our joint jurisdiction, once the township acts on it, then we bring it forward to the City Council to act on that as well, and Engineering has no concerns with the vacation.
All right. Thanks, Chad. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item?